All right, y'all, it is officially six o'clock, so I will call the Monday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Prairie Grove City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Audrey Whitfield, here.
Here.
Tony Cuthbert, here.
Doug Summow, here.
Kevin Andrews, here.
Audit Mars.
Here.
Quick look, here.
All right, with that, we'll move to public comment. Public comment is for anyone to speak at this point. It'll be three minutes that you get for public comment. I do know as far as social media was concerned, we had a concern come up today about the crosswalks at Bush and Bonnie Grove. And so if you're here to speak with that, I do want to tell you, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. And me and Mr. Humphries spent some time together this evening. We figured the easy answer for that is that I volunteer every morning at the elementary school, but I'll just move to the middle school. The school district is in the process of hiring a new CSO. That'll be staged at the middle school. He has, he's been hired, but they're waiting for fingerprints and different stuff like that to come back. And so once he gets that out, then he'll be the permanent fixture, or me and him may be the permanent fixture. So we have a, well, we're addressing that. We do have a temporary answer and possibly a permanent answer. But if you do want to speak, I do, I do not want to take that away from you, but I do want you to know that we did see the call out on Facebook and have worked together to address it. Anyone else that wants to speak? I know we got, no, come on.
Hey, guys. If you don't know me, my name is Amanda Thule. I am the Children's Director at the Prairie Grove Public Library. I've lived here my whole life. I am here to talk about the safety issues at the Bush and Bonnie Grove. And I appreciate that something is being done. I sent an email last year to anybody I could think about, and nothing was done. All I was looking for was a text message sent by the school, a notice put out by the city. The Facebook page is very active, so we could put something out there just to remind people that this is a problem. And it's not just the crosswalks here, it's the crosswalks all over the city. And friendly reminders are never hurtful. They're healthy. We need to be reminded as much as our children do. I have a child that's learning to drive, and so I'm telling him all the time, I have to be as cautious as you do. I have to remind myself. I am happy to hear that a solution is coming. It saddens me that it's taken this long. And if this plan does not work out, I hope that the city and the school can work together to possibly put out a word that we need volunteers for this. And I've never received anything from the city or the school, and I do feel this is a city issue as much as a school issue. That road is maintained by the city. That intersection was chosen by you guys to put there. So any signage, anything that would need to be changed would have to go through you first. It would not be a school choice. And if we're looking for volunteers, we could possibly ask seniors or juniors to come and help kids across from seven to seven thirty. I just thought that that would be a great thing. The SROs are city employees, they're police officers. So maybe they could do assemblies with the kids, with the high schoolers, talking about driving safety, crosswalk safety, and how to use the intersection. And also at the middle school, those kids are terrified. I see it every day. They're scared. They wait for a long time. People are impatient. Everybody's in the hurry. It's scary. I know you guys are aware of the situation, but I feel like it is on my heart, and I had to come and speak about it. I come with no aggression, no hate, no drama, no anything. I am here as a parent and a citizen of Prairie Grove. I could not work for the city or live in the city, and I do. I've chosen this as my home. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Roper. I'm a retired police captain from here at Prairie Grove. Last year, I dropped my two youngest boys off at the middle school. I was at the intersection of Bonnie Grove and sixty-two there, and the four-way that just placed in there. And I looked to my right, and I observed a vehicle coming at about seventy-five miles an hour. So I just sat there and waited, and she went right through that intersection at approximately seventy-five miles an hour. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir. It's public. Come on up. You can ask a question. It doesn't mean anyone necessarily has to answer. Public comment is for you to give your statement. And so it doesn't mean we won't. Just kind of be aware. It doesn't necessarily mean they will answer.
Okay, I live on Summit Street. Mine's Angela Story, and I live on Summit Street, South Summit, where the neighborhood is being built at the end, where it's opened up. I was wanting to request a stop sign between Cleveland and Summit, because I'm not real sure, don't know all the ins and outs, but that seems to be the way that the trucks all use to go, either to the highway or to the development. And there are kids, that mine included, play or ride their bikes, and now a lot of them are driving, and we're all concerned just the speed at which some of the truckers are going. So I just, that's why I said, can I ask a question? Because I don't know how to request a stop sign. I know there's been other ones kind of put up in the area, and I just got curious, okay? How did they get one? Because I would really like one to slow some of that movement from when you turn. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, but you can come off that straight stretch and turn, and you can really gain speed by the second or third house. So if there was a stop sign, and I know some of the residents might hate that, that have lived there for thirty years, I get it. I've lived there for sixteen. It'll be a new stretch for them to have to stop if they lived at the end, but it would slow that hustle to the highway or to the...
So, so I will answer you, and we do have a minute to talk since that unit. So you do request it. In essence, you can request it through me, email that type stuff, call City Hall, Chuck Wilder, who's sitting off to the side, and Chief Workman actually discuss whether or not speed limits should go up or down, stop signs go in and out. But you're all right in that, that one person will love it, the next person will hate it. So a lot of times what we do is we take the information that people give us, and we go out and do some surveying in the area to try to look at kind of the, I hate to say traffic study, because we don't have a whole lot. It's not like we have the strips down that we can really pay attention to. But we look at how beneficial it is and how much it may inconvenience versus the safety behind it. So we got you. You made your request. You're welcome.
My name's Tabitha Ford. I've been not planning on talking, but I told my son that I was coming here because he was a middle school student last year. He just moved up to the junior high, and he was walking last year. Maybe this was the same day, but he said that he had walked up. And we moved from a larger city, so he made eye contact with everybody before he was about to walk. And he said he felt like he should pause, and so a truck flew through. And he's like, maybe I'm being dramatic, but that felt like seventy miles an hour. And he just said, Mom, I don't feel safe crossing there anymore. I don't like talking to adults, and he's like, I definitely don't want to go talk to a room full of adults. So I told him I'm going to come say this for him. He said that he and his friends that walk all talk about how nervous they are in the morning, especially if there were some of the kids that get there like between seven and seven fifteen, because they're trying to get there, when the doors open so they can have breakfast. But he said they all kind of have a story of a close call. Or in one instance, he was walking in the morning, not distracted. He was by himself. He was making his way through the crosswalk, and someone entered the intersection and got on the horn at him, which just makes the situation even scarier. So I really appreciate that you're coming up with a solution. It's been something that we really worried about, and we've got another one coming up to middle school eventually. And I really appreciate you guys hearing that help. Thank you.
Anyone else for public? Come on up.
My name is Michelle Carter in that Greenwood Street. I'm still talking about the approval of the electric vehicles. What do you want to call it?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to state, as you heard these people just talking, how fast some people travel, some of our roads, I'm really saying, and I understand some of these older people would really enjoy, I understand that. But there are certain streets that's busy. That is Mott, that is Buchanan. That's the main ones that they travel faster. And a lot of times through schools, and most teenagers even drive fast. My thing is, I don't think it would be a wise, safe idea for these people in them because a car hits them, a truck hits them, it's not going to be good, you know? And, you know, previously it wasn't like this, but we've just recently had two deaths in our area. And, you know, standing up for kids, I don't want kids out there on the road to, it's more for the people who look for elderly. An elderly woman lives on Mott Street years ago. She backed out, not realizing, but the Coca-Cola truck coming down through there had a three-month brakes to stop. He didn't hit her, thank God. And she's learned to park on the backside now. But still, we have these elderly people that live here, young people learning how to drive. And, you know, my, a suggestion I may have, maybe nobody will like me for it, is let them, if they want to ride them that bad, run in their neighborhoods. You know, because that kind of fits the, when you watch them on TV, they're inside those little areas, and that kind of comes, you know, keeps it contained. The other question is, once they're allowed on the road, are they going to start driving in the school? Is the school going to allow them to be there, you know, in the traffic in the morning and afternoons? It's pretty bad, too. And I just feel like we need to really think about what we're putting out there on these roads, you know, without making them more trouble.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Your concern, we've been...
Ma'am, ma'am, if you want public comment, you're welcome. My concern is safety.
My name is Matthew Carlson. I live in Snyder Grove subdivision. I debated coming and speaking on this topic for some time, because I really didn't want to get involved in the issue. But about two weeks ago, my wife and I were sitting out front, and a boy on a little, he was probably twelve years old, is on an electric motorcycle, like a dirt bike style. And he comes up to an intersection and comes to a stop, but he's a kid. He doesn't necessarily understand the rules of the road. The car's coming this way, don't have a stop sign. And he, I think, was under the impression that everyone has to stop. So he goes to turn, and this lady in an SUV just has to slam the brakes. Another time, I'm driving into the neighborhood, and there's a girl in a golf cart with probably three of her friends with her. And they're in front of me, I'm right behind them, and a car's coming the opposite direction. And when there's opposing traffic, they panic and swerved onto the sidewalk and then drove on the sidewalk for the remainder of the time they were on the street. You know, I've seen several near misses with a lot of these vehicles, whether it's ATVs, side-by-sides, golf carts. And I just, I have a lot of concerns about safety and liability. Most of the people I see operating these, there's a couple of adults, but most people I see are children. And there'll be five kids hanging onto a golf cart. And I'm not talking necessarily about, you know, something that's got lights and seatbelts. I'm talking about an Easy Go that still has the divot mix on the back from a golf course. You know, there's been a lot of traffic issues. I mean, I think concern over the speed on city streets and congestion has been brought up already. And I just don't think that there is a place for a bunch of these electric vehicles on the city streets. And, you know, I just, I worry when a kid hits a car or a kid hits a child that's on a bike, you know? Where is the liability going to fall? Are you going to have neighbors suing neighbors? Are you going to have, you know, fights in the street over, you know, kids getting into trouble? And I think that's what I see more than anything. There's rules that are already existing right now that limit the use of these vehicles on the street. Everybody that I've seen that owns them has continued to use them, regardless of the fact that these rules exist. So I know that there's talk about creating specific rules, but I just don't think they're going to be followed. I just think it's going to be abused.
Thank you, sir.
I have to address that. So my name is Bradley Wilkinson, and I'm better known as the guy in the blue side-by-side Honda. The, I think he has a lot of great points, but the age situation has to be taken into consideration. I mean, I, you've probably seen me driving my blue side-by-side down the road with my lab in it to go to the pharmacy, or to take my lab out into the country to let my dog run. Don't ride it around, except maybe to go to the store instead of taking my twenty-five-hundred HD diesel, you know? And, but it has to be a licensed person. It has to be somebody insured. And if y'all decide not to do that, then what I guess gets me the most is going to Lincoln two years ago to get my permit or get my license for this, spending six to eight hundred dollars to get the equipment put on for blinkers and horns and insurance and everything else, only to find out here in this last couple of meetings that, you know, I can't drive it. And no, I haven't been driving it. You know, I do enjoy it, but I haven't been driving it, because that's the rules. So that's just what I wanted to put out there, is, you know, make it where it's adults. And these children, it is scary. It is dangerous, no doubt. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Kevin Roper again. When I retired from Prairie Grove, I went to the Pinnacle Country Club in Rogers. And I just retired last May after eleven years as Assistant Director of Security. Of course, it's a gated golf cart, gated community with a golf course and a country club. But it's actually a small city. The mayor's been up there. He's familiar with it. There are probably seven hundred and fifty homes, just like, looks like public streets, but they're private. They're not owned by the city of Rogers. They're owned by the Property and Association. And of course, golf carts are a lot. That's why people move in there. It's a golf cart community, golf course. The problem is, when you get these young kids on them, we had numerous, numerous golf cart accidents, golf carts versus vehicles, teenage girls, boys flipping them over. I've had near misses, numerous near misses with golf carts up there. Now, both of these gentlemen had good points. The other, if you do something, there has to be rules. It should be licensed driver, maybe a vehicle like this gentleman owns. But you just can't allow golf carts to run around on the streets. Like I said, I've seen numerous accidents. One of the employees was riding a utility golf cart. Somebody went left of center, hit him head-on, threw him through the windshield, broke both of his arms. So you really need to be careful if you're going to allow this, because there will be accidents. Can you imagine what I witnessed, that stop sign, if somebody was on a golf cart? And they just went through there. They weren't driving defensively.
One minute.
Okay. Do you have any questions on the phone? Okay, but I think if you just allow golf carts, you're going to have some fatalities. You would. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
You caught it. So I can come up?
Yes, sir.
So my name's Thomas Harvey. I live in Snyder Grove. I'm a registered nurse. I worked in healthcare for about fifteen years, a little bit more than that. And, I mean, the facts are the facts. You know, there's fifteen thousand golf cart injuries a year. And a lot of times when you have young children, this is my daughter here, I won't say her name, so I don't embarrass you too much. But I've seen a lot of kids her age riding around on them, that of course are not here in this meeting tonight. And it just makes me nervous, because I have some children that have disabilities, and they don't understand like, hey, I need to move over here where, you know, this gentleman here might understand the rules of the road. So that's just one thing that concerns me. One of the facts is children under sixteen account for thirty-one point two percent of all cases, you know, related to golf cart type injuries. So there definitely has to be some rules around this, and I'm not trying to make enemies with my neighbors, but I just want to make sure that things are done safely.
So, thank you. Yeah, hold on for a second, because you've been up here a few times. Do you have anything new?
Not tonight.
But there's no reason to regurgitate the fact that you want golf carts. Like, we know you want golf carts. You know what I'm saying? Like, because then, and then the next person, and the next person, and then we have a three-hour meeting to say the same thing we've always said.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. That ain't fair. This is public. We often, any mother, we say the same thing over and over. We have the rights to view their facts that they're throwing against us. If we have their facts, there's nothing...
What I, you know, what I'm saying is, your comments you've already told to the council. And so to just, to just say the same thing again, the council knows that you want golf carts.
He said the same thing twice, too, about the seventy-five miles an hour. That's regurgitated as well. It's fair. Public comment.
He talked about a subdivision when it, I mean, he talked about an intersection when it came to a crosswalk, and then he talked about golf.
Again, with the golf cart, the same intersection, the same truck, the same area that he said twice. He just hit it right here. He absolutely hit it. So it's public. Six more. One was a whole one.
Tell me.
How many more want to speak on this? Show your hands. How many more want to speak on this?
I didn't...
Come on.
My plate for his.
Come on, come on.
The, my name is Steve. I live in the Prairie Grove, the Snyder Grove Development as well, and I do have an LSV golf cart. Flora, Mississippi passed a similar law recently, same one that the city attorney drew up. Very similar action. It's almost the same. I like what the, what the council's been presented with. I like the ordinance that was written and spoke up last, last meeting. So I think it's a great idea. I think the ordinance will cover all of that. Couple of fun facts. Because I like fun facts. In two thousand and twenty, there were a billion dollars in sales of golf carts. From two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-five, that went up to five billion. There are forty-six thousand registered LSVs throughout the country. Last week on Friday, MSNBC and the Today Show highlighted and profiled a city and their mayor riding golf carts around. And the city's embracing it. They've embraced it. They love it. They enjoy the no footprint, and they're not having near the problems that folks are talking about having so far. I'll give them that. The thing that I'm hoping that we, that we understand is that there are several people here tonight that have very expensive LSVs that want to keep driving them. There are some folks that have golf carts that aren't legal to be driven on the road at all. They don't have any brake lights. They just have headlights and taillights, but that's totally different. I believe that the city attorney went last week, or last month, presented the council with a really good statute. And I think that the age limits, that the restrictions that are involved in that statute are perfect. And I think that it can be controlled in a decent way where folks aren't going to get hurt. That's pretty much all I got, I guess.
Did you say that's Florida, Mississippi?
Yes, ma'am. Flora, Flora, Mississippi.
I just looked up their population. Just want to make sure there's, they have ten times the like, the amount of people we have. I just wanted, I don't know if that was mentioned in there at all. I was just curious if they mentioned anything about that in the paper. Because I haven't read that paper.
You can have it if you want. I got from local business owners. She addressed it to me, and she said, hey, you got to come see this. So I came up and picked it up. You know, I get it. The city's growing, and the population's growing. The golf cart purchases, they're not going to stop. They're going to keep going. And whatever town, or whatever city, or whatever parish people live in, they're going to have these things, and they're going to own. And I think it's a positive thing for the city to jump on board and be a part of that. Several cities have, and for these cities to be on MSNBC and on the Today Show, that's awesome. We could be on that same show.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, come on.
You still want to say what you said? I mean, those, there are those. My name is Kenna Hill. I live in Sundowner, and I have an LSV, and my tires are flexed. It's been set for two months. I don't have that problem. I got it. I get it. I understand the safety things, but kids who aren't supposed to drive cars are going to crash them anyway. I've seen kids on bicycles have wrecks. That safety is a big concern. But if it's a law and there are rules we have to follow, there are going to be those who don't. Whether they're riding five on a golf cart or riding through the neighborhood and shouldn't drive them seventy-five through an intersection, people don't follow rules. So there should be consequences. Fix them. Fix them. I'm about it. I'm for it. My golf cart has just sat there for two months. I don't go downtown anymore. Didn't go to the pool this summer. It's not as fun. So if I'm going to do anything, even the post office, I haven't been downtown Prairie Grove in two months. I hope it's still well. I don't go to any of the functions, because I'm not going in my car. If I'm getting in my car, I'm driving in Farmington. I'll spend my money in Farmington. The little shops downtown, the, our little city streets, I love being down there on my golf cart. Haven't been down there in two months. I haven't even been to Harps. If I'm going to get in my vehicle, I'm driving. Farmington, Fayetteville, I'm, I have to drive. I have to drive.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Are we only talking about this, or...
Any public comment?
Okay, I'm still against the golf carts, but I said it last... Who made things, the dishes along Pittman? The city, there's some spots that look like, you know, perfect rain, I mean, basically, it's sort of washed out or something. I started trying to get healthy, so I walked a little bit of dishes. You said, tell Larry that Larry's checking out. Other than that, the only other thing I wanted to ask about, and I know this came about years ago, we really need a sidewalk from Parks down, basically to, what is that, Buchanan? And I know there's probably one spot in there. It'd be difficult to do it, the utility pole there. But those are some suggestions I have, and still against golf carts.
Any other public comment? Here and now, we'll move to item four, the approval of the July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five Railroad City, until minutes.
Sunny, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side. It was approved. The Treasures Report was sent out, at least the June statements. We actually have July done. And so by next month, we'll send both of them out. But June was sent out. If you have no questions or comments, we will move them to audit. Here are no questions or comments. Item six was an award presentation. We're going to move that to next month. And then we'll start with the unfinished business, which is an ordinance to approve the use of utility task vehicles on city streets, and we're on our second reading for that.
Just place the ordinance on second reading. Second.
I have a motion by Doug, a second by Kevin. Roll call, please. Excuse me. Any other comment?
Parker's going to do some reading.
We're not going to have to vote first, but know if he wants to, if he has to read it. We'll roll call it, then he reads.
We're not suspending rules to read it by title only, just having a reading. I don't think that requires a vote.
There's no vote. Okay.
An ordinance to authorize the use of utility task vehicles on city streets. Being ordained by the City Council, which City of Prairie Grove Arkansas, that section one, titled This Ordinance shall be known as the two thousand and twenty-five UTV ordinance. Section two, chapter eight point four zero, added a new chapter eight point four zero, with that in deferment, Grove Municipal Code, to read as follows. Chapter eight point four zero, utility task vehicles, eight point four zero point zero one, used on city streets authorized. Following the effective date of this ordinance, electric-powered utility task vehicles, as that term is defined in ACA, section twenty-seven dash twenty-one dash one oh two, per in Pinnacle five, shall be allowed to operate on city streets. Section eight point four zero point zero two, functional equipment. Every UTV operated on city streets shall be equipped with the equipment required under ACA, section twenty-seven dash twenty-one dash one oh eight, per in Pinnacle C. Section eight point four zero point zero three, operational restrictions. Every UTV operated on city streets shall be... Every U T B operated on city streets shall be operated in accordance with the requirements found in A C A. Section twenty-seven dash twenty-one dash one oh seven, parenthetical C. Eight point four zero point zero four, registration required. Every U T B operated on city streets shall register said U T B with the city annually. And display the registration sticker on the roll cage, on the driver's side, front, roll art. Section eight point four zero point zero five, use on streets limited. No U T B may be operated on any segment of a street or highway within the city with a speed limit in excess of thirty-five miles per hour. U T Bs may not operate on Heritage Parkway, U S Highway sixty-two or Douglas Street from Heritage Parkway to the State Park, U S Highway sixty-two B. Section eight point four zero point zero six, Houston City Parks. Registered U T Bs may be driven on driveways and designated parking lots of Reef Park, Lock Park, Ladyport Park, the Donald Park and its complex, or any other designated city park. Any other use within city parks is prohibited under chapter twelve point oh A, but the Prairie Grove municipal code. Section three, effective days, ordinance shall become effective from and after sixty days following its postage, unless an emergency positive effect. Section four, repealing clause, ordinances or parts thereof enforced at the time that this ordinance shall take effect that are in conflict herein with or hereby revealed. Section five, saving clause, nothing herein shall be deemed to affect any rights or obligations existing at the time of the passage of this ordinance. Section six, severability clause, in the event any portion of this ordinance is declared inoperative or invalid as a result of a statute or judicial decision. Then only that portion expressly so declared to be inoperative or invalid shall be affected thereby and all of the provisions herein shall remain full notice and effective.
That it?
That's it.
So let's move to new business. Well, we just said you don't have to vote. There are no further.
It'll just be on third read next time.
That's why you had me confused. That's why, I thought you had to vote before you read it, then.
We have to suspend the rules, read by title only, since we're not reading by title. We're reading by order. Next month, uh, it's just. Next month will be a vote to approve the ordinance after it's read.
So is everyone good? So moving on to new business, all in's transferring the administrative duties from the local retirement plan to the law fee. The local retirement plan is a retired fatherman. We have seven left on it. It's two spouses. And then, actually it's eight, two spouses and, and six gentlemen that's still on it. If they, anyway, the short of this one is that they have voted to allow law fee to take it over. It keeps them even. It actually gives them a little bit of a benefit when it comes to, um, some pay raises without having to go through the administrative duties of the city. So the, the local client has voted move. But to go into effect, we have to have y'all vote as well.
And, and this would have been mandatory once we reach five members, I didn't know you said.
Or move it in the rule place, or is it first read by alone?
Second.
I have the motion by Doug, a second by Bray. Any further discussion? Here and on roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wettel.
Yes.
Free drag.
Yes.
Doug Stumble.
Yeah.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Inmars.
Yes. Yes.
An ordinance to transfer administration and retirement coverage for eligible members of the Prairie Grove Fire Release Compensation Fund to the Arkansas Local Police and Fire Retirement Systems, Lotte Field. And authorizing the mayor to enter into a give around the hold agreement with Lotte Field.
The first general rule, please, that agree about the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion by Doug, a second by Bray. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Wettel.
Yes.
Free drag.
Yes.
Doug Stumble.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Inmars.
Yes.
Orders passes and with that we'll move to item B, a resolution to amend the M O Us for the student resource offices for the Prairie Grove School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, the only thing we changed from your approval last month is that Washington County to be able to put the S R Os on their radio, um, Chief, you may have to help me out on this. They changed radios and they wanted a certain wording on it. So all we did was change the wording. That way serial numbers and some different stuff matched. Outside of that, nothing has changed. They just needed a certain wording so they could register their radios.
Make a motion. We approve the resolution to amend the M O U for student resource officers with Prairie Grove School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. That will move to the reports of committee sanitation, super.
Thanks for going good for sanitation. Uh, we have discontinued our fresh service for accepting any more calls for service. Uh, also the employees and maintenance crews will be working Wednesday, Thursday. And then we go and do a pick up on the existing brush that's already been added to the list prior to this service going away. And then, uh, also we'll be opening bids for a new sanitation truck this week. Uh, it was spec of the sidearm truck, so we'll be looking at it and see more so if we can realistically afford to go that way, cause they are probably a bit more expensive than the very road truck. But it's, uh, it's good for drivers' retainers to go get, keep the people here. You know, it's a hard time keeping employees here when it gets really hot or it's cold and wet. And so this way they basically just can sit in the truck and operate a joystick. So we will be opening that this Friday. We'll bring it back as well.
Thank you, sir. Street Department, Audrey Wettel.
I've seen the overlay project on North Mark, but I get it done and went up some, uh, there's a portion of it's meant. On the street right there. So we got it overlaid as well. Uh, we'll be looking at probably provisions, uh, this tracking. To match what they'd already put at the bottom of Kate Smith. So we're excited about having that done. Uh, the sidewalk on South Pittman or Pittman Street between Buchanan and Parks has already been, uh, planned. We're just, uh, waiting to talk to somebody a little bit. We have to cut their driveway and cut their approach. And so that's, that's probably our biggest impact there. And maybe something we have to wait till after the first year, we did do a lot of sidewalk projects here.
Water and sewer, Doug Sumble.
Uh, in the sewer, fancy project sits about down over there on Baggett and Butler. They're doing the street, uh, perhaps for paving and that'll be ramping up pretty soon. There's also the same company has started construction on the new force main on uh, industrial. And so, uh, they expect that's gonna take probably about a hundred and twenty days. It's gonna go pretty fast. If you get the name services connected to it, things that will be our, uh, bowing system and our ball that will be struck now. The fancy project I brought a couple of months ago there on Park Street for future development of the school area in that region. Uh, I've got the impact, uh, Friday. And I'm gonna look into it over right now. We're gonna submit to the health department, but we're not gonna send it to bed until we finish each other's sanitation projects, six towns, five and six.
Thank you, sir. Call it's Kevin Andrew.
Uh, Dr. Earl, please, we're collecting, uh, divvied out, uh, so you came in with, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars. Twenty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and sixty cents, sorry.
Just kind of an update that of course been a, it's been a worry the last three or four years because we've seen declining revenue. This year we've changed that trend. We're on our way back up a little bit, not a lot, but, uh, three years of decline and now it looks like this year we're gonna finish higher than we did last year. So that's a good trend. Hopefully we'll see more of that.
By the pot, Chris Powell.
I'm sure everybody got chief female. Um, chief, did you elaborate anything?
Oh, just busy. You can look at probably a little over ten percent increase from last year.
Thank you, sir. Box and red, Chris Powell.
Um, I went by the money for park and noticed the girls are playing at the stack nicely. The lights are back working, so thank you for that. Um, pool's closing down now. Yep. So, uh, just tell us all about it.
Started draining today. Uh, we asked the maintenance personnel that has spent a lot of the time over there this summer to make a list of different things that we wanna change out, uh, this winter. So we're gonna be working on those projects all winter instead of waiting till Harps to try to ascertain when it's be done. You know, so we'll start looking at it immediately and do it, uh, those are good rainy day projects. The majority of it's done inside. It's, uh, the facilities and stuff, you know, it's getting a little long in the tooth and everything on the outside was facelifted a couple of years ago when we did rehab. And it looks really nice. And so now we're gonna be addressing some of the stuff on the inside, maybe some paint, new fixtures in the showers and things like that. So also, uh, we opened bids last week for the new pitch law courts. A little bid came in at a hundred thirty-one thousand, uh, high bid a hundred ninety-nine thousand. We had five people split bids. Uh, so I've been in contact with the low bid to try to get any time one week on the start once we approve. And, uh, hope to bring it back to you next month, once we get some timeline and all the details worked out.
And we're a hundred and fifty swim with their Saturday, four-legged ones.
Four-legged, yeah, yeah. Lot of puppies.
Yeah.
Police department, Doug Stumble.
Word two.
Uh, well, I'm basically so busy, obviously, um, I sent out the details, what, what the, I did a seven month period of the stats, everybody get those. And I did January, uh, twenty-four, July twenty-four. Last year within that timeframe, we had thirty-nine hundred bits, seven calls. Same timeframe this year, we've had forty-two hundred and twenty-six calls, so it increased to two hundred sixty-nine. It is hard to get real police stats and calls. We, Washington County logs everything. We do reports. Oftentimes, uh, we have people always stopping in. The front lost property. Of course, that's not on the radio, especially at high time. Um, and, uh, so.
Yeah.
Busy. Um, last week was a, uh, very busy week, as most people are aware, um, especially with fire. I appreciate these guys. Uh, we had two major accidents last week and fire department are, are great. When you get certain scene of fatalities, it also takes a whole lot of work. Uh, we, we got one ostrich accident reconstruction. So there's a lot of measurements and there's a lot of stuff, boss. You wouldn't think that, but if you ever lost a loved one, whether, you know, it's your family that's lost or, or, you know, it's oftentimes, everybody's the victim, I say, even enough. It's just, you know, nobody ever was in that. If it's not your fault, somebody lives alive, you should have lived with that. So a lot of work goes to them. We, we typically do a lot of, uh, collection of evidence. So the fire department works great. We love when those big trucks are out there, um, blocking traffic. Cause you're out there working at sixty, seventy miles an hour. Pretty quick, we had to go through measurements today on the second one. So we waited till ten o'clock on a Monday. So we did a measurement. You gotta do it in daylight. There were seven of us in Farmington, D D. Um, so we got that and trying to get all that and of course, you know, I will run a lot more detail outside our respect of the families, um. But busy, calls are up, traffic, accidents are up. I put that list, actually the number is, and I even had four more. We had three more accidents, blue nose. Um, other details that we've got, um, shop the cop. Uh, we're doing the harvest fall. I know the mayor's been pushing this, so September second, um, all, all proceeds from, you had, you had to go through the link. I believe the mayor shared, we shared it. So if you buy your tickets through that link, six dollars, that'll go back to us. I believe the mayor talked to me on, I think with the two dollar transaction fee and the ticket fees, like fifteen bucks. So really the tickets aren't bad. It's supposed to be, I think, mayor designated, every four.
Yes. Section one or four. So when you pull it up, so if you just go to the city's website, if you don't have the, the thing in front of you, it just brings you to the link. We have a whole section for us. Coach, uh, Danny Absia will throw out the first pitch at the game. They'll do a little video, I think between the third and, and fourth inning for the city of Prairie Grove. And so the, the night itself is the city of Prairie Grove night. But, uh, all proceeds are go to, not all proceeds, six dollars of your ticket will go to shop for the cop.
Yes.
If you use the link.
Yes. So wherever Latin partnership, um, will do for that. Um, other news, we moved into the building. Everything's working great. Uh, A C works great, uh, for sure. So um, very happy to offer, that, for, for, you know, they're, they're excited. Got a new clerk that'll start the next Monday. Now that's actually clerk, Larry even knows, um, she, she worked here many, many years ago in Shell. He did some account. Tony, if he was here, he would, he'd know who Shell is, cause he's been here about long as Larry, you know, not that long, but. Clerk back finally. Um, we are an officer short, apparently one of our newer officers that would just waste a lot of time, training, money, and then um, went to another apartment for higher money. Um, we're still fighting that same fight, obviously. I know it's budget time, um, you know, and J C does the same thing. We all need employees and we all have to take care of it. It's just, it's just hard. I think it's uniquely hard for us. Um, I did an interview with ten or five dudes today. And I think it makes it harder for us, but we're in an area, it's, it's not like Prairie Grove's, you know, you know, sixty miles, forty miles from a big, big city like Fayetteville. Fayetteville's dry the road, so we literally had to beat Fayetteville. There's no possible way we'd beat with their kind of self-revenue tax. So we're never gonna pay our employees what we're paying them on. Uh, so it just puts us in a hard way. And I think J C would agree with firing them too. Um, it, it just, it's just tough. And I know there's only so much money. I don't know Chuck needs people, so hopefully that bypass fill up with, uh, businesses and that'll change in the future. Low speed vehicles, I, I, you know, I'll leave it pretty close. I think there might have a place to stand some of that, so don't need to, to go off. Other than that, last good for police busy, so.
You're on TV tonight, too.
Well, somebody already told me and I, I hope they got my good side, you know, it's something it is.
I had to leave and come here, so I guess see, I bet you'll be on at ten though.
Long range Brandon.
Yeah, for the first time ever. I think, no, I'm just kidding. I don't know how long it's been, but we did not meet, cause we did not have an agenda either. Yep.
So if we all see, we do have, I do have something on, uh, um, Barker said, we didn't have to do a resolution, but I did want it in a minute. So a few months back, we did a contract with Orby Hutch, which is the dog, the called like a dog wash. Um, the truth is, he should already be built by now, but he has some hangups. And we, what we want of our ten-year lease is for the moment he starts business to run ten years, a cycle with his business. And so he, truthfully, he owes us five months of payments right now. But what we like to do is just move the contract in and start September first. He plans on having a building up in the month of September and that way we'd start, rather than him backpaying us. And then there's gonna be a time where the ten-year lease ends. But he had five months where it wasn't in business. Does that make sense? And so while we're asking y'all, I guess, um, I'm just putting in the minute so y'all know that we're adjusting the contract to start September first. And that way it'll give him a, a valid ten years with the business running. Senior citizens, follow the most.
I have something.
All right.
They have, um, that, uh, that is, uh, well, Lance was telling me this, that they've applied for a grant or getting ready in the process of applying for a, a grant for a new roof and a washer and dryer.
Have they had trouble with the roof?
I guess. I don't know.
Yes, metal, metal roofs.
Yes. Don't do that, Larry. Don't question me. I know. Do they have a washer and dryer, wa- washer and dryer now? I know it. A washer and dryer now?
No.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, I didn't think they did. I didn't know where it could be. That's all I got.
All right. And since Tony's not here, I'll take over library. I don't have a whole lot of updates. Did you know that their summer program went well? If you went there during the summer, it was jam packed. So their summer program continues to go, continues to make good mold in our area. And so with that, do we have any announcements? Clothesline Fair.
August thirtieth, September first.
Right, you say every morning at nine o'clock.
And all will be.
Last year, last year, I, I got witnesses.
Nine, nine AM is when it occurred, students.
This is it.
September second, chief has already brought up the city of Prairie Grove night with the naturals. And then September sixth, which would be the, excuse me, the Saturday right after, um, clothesline fair. At the high school, we'll have the Brink Community Family Event where we'll have an auction. And the bean boys will be out there serving their beans. So y'all wanna support the family. It's the two girls that was left behind in history, but seventeen-year-old is married. So even though she's still their responsibility, she still lost her parents. Like she, she does have a husband and she is starting to move forward with her life. There's a seven-year-old and a nine-year-old girl that the aunt is looking to get the legal stuff done as far as adoption. And, uh, and so what we're just hoping to raise some money, kinda help them with the second phase of life. GoFundMe has done a great job. Uh, I think they owe eighty thousand dollars on GoFundMe and I don't know, I don't wanna pretend like I know how much a funeral costs. Oh, actually J C's back here. Always hear fifteen to twenty thousand on a funeral. Is that kinda an, an average? Oh, actually, J C's back here, always here, fifteen to twenty thousand on a funeral, is that kinda an average? Okay, and so what, what we've, uh, what we've kinda looked at, even on eighty thousand, because I don't wanna leave anything off the table, because in many cases. Myself, the Bean Brothers and the pie lady is asking for people to come out and help us raise money for this family. Eighty thousand dollars, we recognize as a lot of money, but those two bodies had to be transferred to California. They had to not just do one funeral, they had to do two, and so safe estimate forty to fifty thousand is probably gone, just for funeral costs. That leaves them thirty thousand, once again, thirty thousand's a lot of money. But if I put two kids in front of you today, and you had to start raising them from that moment, from seven and nine years old, all the way to at least eighteen, if not older. Thirty thousand is not a lot of money, so if we can raise ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, and that's what we wanna do, and we wanna help them with their second phase of life. So, we're using City Hall as a drop off center for anyone that wants to help on auction items. And then that day, at four o'clock, we'll start a Christian music concert that's gonna be run by Keith Boston. And then we'll start serving beans, um, from five, for five on, and they may start a little bit early when people start coming, so four to five. And then five to six is beans, and then six to seven is the auction, and we just hope to make some pretty good money. They also have a Brink's Memorial Fund that is at Priority Bank. So if you don't wanna be part of that, but you just wanna drop them five dollars, and you wanna make sure it goes straight to them. But I'll have to pay in GoFundMe that percentage, and you can just go straight to Priority Bank, put it in that fund, and go straight to the, the memorial fund. To help out those little girls. Any other nonsense? Oh, yeah, what time? So the Saturday after, Saturday, 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 let's get busy. Hey, for anyone who hasn't been to a street dance, stay fun, like we really do have a good time, and for whatever reason, maybe it's just me. But the fall is always better than the spring, because it's not as hot, and so September thirteenth. What, what time, what's our times?
Uh, the band will play six to, six to nine.
Six to nine.
The, the march lines will be up at five.
And who's the band?
Yeah, or it's just the march.
If, if nothing else, it's worth coming out to see a Jojo.
Yeah, bring the chairs.
I went to the street dance summer before last, to the Road to Buck Park.
We do, you know, and, and we'll, we'll close in a second, but we do understand both sides, I, I, I don't know who I spoke with today. I'm trying to remember the name, because I speak to so many, but it was about you now, and I, I think it's important for all of us to understand this. Because people are passionate on the one side or the other, like that's just the truth. We serve nine thousand people, there's no decision we'll ever make that's gonna satisfy everyone. No matter if you're a yes vote or a no vote, someone's gonna love you, and someone's gonna be disappointed in you, that's just the reality. In the end of all things, I don't, I mean, we're on our second reading, next month they'll tell us where we go from this one. I don't know the answer right now, what I do know is that there'll be portions of our community that'll be glad, and portions that won't. In the end, it's, it's our task to listen to all of it, try to soak it in, and then try to make the best decision we can. For the nine thousand people in the direction of our city, and, and some, some of those, very, very difficult, so. I just, we, I don't want you to think that we're, that we're not listening, but.
I know, I'm not gonna say it, I just think it affects, not just those of us who haven't been. It affects, in, in my case, like I said, I've been, I've been in, I haven't been downtown at all, and I'm getting burned all somewhere else. And take my grandkids, they haven't been in the pool, with those definitely. I mean, it hurts, so.
All we got left is a adjournment.
Hey, I do wanna.
Okay.
Six, six and seven is the John Fest Downtown. And October, it's the second Saturday, the second Saturday, October, is the movie night downtown.
And it gets busy.
And then October eighteenth is the, the, uh. So anybody in, anybody and everybody, uh, is invited to join in on Chili Cook Off, on all of it, but.
October is Chili Cook Off Day?
October eighth.
All right, let me add another one, October thirty first is the city and Battlefield Trunk or Tree. So every single week in October, we'll have something.
I just wanted to, he's not from Prairie Grove, but, uh, the firefighter in Springdale who passed away. The daughter, they live in Farmington, and the daughter, stepdaughter did swim with the piranhas. And so I know that did affect a lot of people, you can also support them on Facebook, um, there's a firefighter association that, I don't know what it's called. But, do you know the name of it?
Yes, Ray, but, but Ray.
But they, he, they also had two young kids, and there was an ATV accident that killed him, so.
If you send it to me, I'll throw it on the page.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
All that's left is a German.
Am I supposed to do that? Okay, I move that we adjourn, second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Y'all have a good night.